Hola, bienvenidos y ya te. Hi, everyone. We welcome you to our council culture. It's another Electoral Quiz-o-matic brought to you by us, 505-O-Matic. If you are not familiar with us, first off, I am Desba. And across the stage from me is the lovely, wonderful DJ Billiam. How are you doing, DJ Billiam? If we've learned anything from our 505-O-Matic endeavor, et cetera, from being us, is that Santa Fe is ravenous for little internet videos. But we don't want to spend all our time on our phones for that dopamine hit and our likes and our shares from our friends, but we wanted to start a live series here at the wonderful Jean Cocteau. Thank you, Jean Cocteau. Merci Jean Cocteau for your well-being and yours and the little videos and all these events and feed our souls. However, it would be great if we could feed ourselves and our families doing this, right? You know, you think you want to get this worthy of... Don't you think our work is worthy of a living wage? That's why we're inviting you to help us continue to make this work and grow. And yes, we love grants and donations and... But you know that the dream would be is if we foster, we could sustain ourselves mostly through subscriptions. What? You're asking, like, what are we talking about, subscriptions? Yes, that's right. We're launching our 505-O-Matic newsletter at 505-O-Matic.com. You can click on the subscribe button and for the lowest fuck price of $5.05 a month, you can rest easy knowing you're helping us bring you accessible little videos and free in-person community conversations forums and quiz shows like this. We know you have 17 other subscriptions. What's one more, right? But we know that if you cancel your ABC, your CBS, your Disney, Hulu Plus, you have the money to add one more to your long list of wonderful, amazing content from your local community. All right. But another way you can support us is by purchasing our limited run of Cheeks-style t-shirts. New this time, we have our Ringer tees, two colors. So definitely be one of the first to get some of these, okay? All right. And of course, this is now where you pull out your phones. We will of course accept your donations if you feel like it before you can silence your phones and grab this code off of your... with your camera and send a few clams our way. This is the only time... Well, no, actually, you can take pictures. Just make sure that your phones are on silent, that's all. You definitely take pictures. Yes, there's signs around. Yes, there's signs around. This won't be your only time. All right. Well, on to the rest of our show, right? It's time to get to know your candidate's Mad Libs style. Now it's time to meet all of you. We have Pat Fagali. We have Aurora Martinez. Oh my God, we have Liz. Spirit! We have David Montoya. We have Paul Bluestamonte. And we have Catherine Rivera. Well, we know that not all of you might be familiar with Mad Libs. Are you familiar with Mad Libs? Have you played Mad Libs, all of you? Have you all played Mad Libs? Have we all done the whole thing? Yes, this is the best time in second and third grade that I've ever had in my life. All right, so while we're doing this, we're going to ask a couple of you some questions about yourself while we're asking for some words, okay? This is going to be tough, okay? All right. So first off, we're going to start with Pat, okay? So Pat, so I know that you're a cyclist. Which is one of your favorite trails to ride on around here?
I love the River Trail.
All right. All right. Please, if you wouldn't mind, give us a shade of brown.
Taupe.
Right. And so although you're... You said you've been living here for a while. What brought you to New Mexico?
Many things. One is my parents, who are in the audience, they live here.
Hi, parents.
And then the other one was that I was living in Ohio the first time that Trump got elected. And I was like, maybe I should live somewhere else.
And you know what? New Mexico is a good place to be living.
Great place.
Please give me a number.
Any, any number. 27.
Okay. And then, so now we're going to move on to Aurora. So tell me a little bit about your time being in New Mexico and deciding that you didn't want to go to other schools outside of New Mexico.
Oh, you mean Durango in California?
Yeah. Why choose, why choose not to go or, you know, what was the benefit to coming back?
I think I wanted to explore, like anybody else, wanted to get out of New Mexico, explore a little bit. I explored. I had a little fun and I was like, okay, now it's time to go home and get serious.
Yeah. Can you give me an art medium, but make it plural?
God, I should know this.
There's sculpture, there's welding, I think Pat was like oil painting.
I'm trying to think. I paint. So how about paintings? There you go. See, Pat helped me here. She helped me.
Paintings?
Paintings.
And also give me a number.
Nine.
All right. Okay, on to Liz. Is it Liz or Elizabeth?
Well, it is Elizabeth, but only my mom, if I'm getting yelled at and calling Elizabeth Liz, yes.
Yeah. So is mom here?
No, my mom is not here.
Okay.
She's probably, hopefully, here. Like, she's vibing here, but no, she's not here here.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. Well, I'm sure that that... We're in Santa Fe. We all know what the vibing is in Santa Fe. We're all used to that. So what is an adjective that you can give me?
An adjective? Stinky. I don't know. Thank you, thank you.
I know this is a really hard one. What's been one of the most challenging things about being a mom?
Whoa. I'm gonna have to say working full-time and being a mom and having to go back to work after three months with both babies because I maxed out my credit card with childcare and all of those types of things. And, you know, as we know, we're talking about affordability a lot in this campaign, and it's expensive to live in Santa Fe. So I have to say the stress of all that working, having to go back to work, having to find a daycare, you know, all this livability stuff, put the babies in daycare, leave them with somebody you don't know, and then, yeah, just having to pay for all of that, you know, having to people who work in education and, yeah, it can get pretty expensive. So probably like the stress of all that.
Heard. What's a cliche, cliche New Mexico symbol?
Red and green chili? I mean, it's not cliche. We all love it, but I mean...
Or another way to say red and green chili is?
Christmas, yes, 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 yes.
All right, so we're moving on to Mr. David.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
I can't comment on, other than my mom, having a hard time raising me. It's probably the hardest part about her being a mom.
What was the, what was the, what was the most horrible, or at least maybe one of the few horribles things that you've done to your mom?
All right, so in high school, there was this, they went out of town, my mom and my dad went out of town. Yeah, see, she knows. She's like, that's it. You got it. You got it right. And, and we threw a party at the house. And, and so I had a bunch of my friends there and pretty soon all of Santa Fe started showing up. And the neighbors, who I think were drug runners, they were the security. They had a hand grenade and an M16. And so they kept the peace at the door. And, and then my sister was down at the plaza and doing nothing, you know, because she was just a nerd in high school and I was in trouble. And I think she was with you, Renee, down at the plaza. And, and they said, hey, look, I said, she says, hey, did you hear about this party? It's right off of Condoleiro Street. My sister's like, I know that. I know. That's probably where I live. And it's in this two-story house. Hey, that's my house. So my sister showed up to the party and, and eventually the other neighbor was a do-gooder, you know, shut it down and called my godfather. And my godfather says, I'm going to be there in 10 minutes. And he was there in about 15. And we had the whole place clean.
Good for you, good for you.
Yeah. Well, the only thing that happened was we broke a chair in the dining room. And, and, like, three weeks later, I was already, you know, I was, we were already, oh, yeah, we got through with it. We made it. I think Dad sat in the chair and it broke. And it was taped together and that's how we really got busted about the, about the party. So we were close to making a clean getaway, but not, not really.
But not really?
Not really.
So give me a number.
Number one.
Number one. What would be luxury items?
For me? Yeah, like a really fuzzy pair of slippers.
Okay.
Because I told you, all I do is I walk for my campaign, so it's...
All right, moving on.
I was an angel, so you...
So when you were in the Air Force, you've done quite a different number of things. Is it, do you feel like you've kind of settled on something that you, you didn't want to get into politics? What was the change earlier this year that made you, what was that snapping moment for you?
The election. Trump getting elected again. And just every day, there's something new. You know, I checked out completely. I was like, I'm not, I'm not going to do this, you know. I just don't want to hear anything political. And, but, but it was every day. And, yeah, eventually, you know, I'm just, I'm not the type that sits around comfortable with not doing anything. And so this made sense.
All right. Famous New Mexico celebrity.
Oh, wow. Well, there's Doogie Howser, right? Neil Patrick Harris.
We'll put that down, we'll put that down.
Yeah, that's it, Neil Patrick Harris.
And then, so we're gonna move on to...
Okay, all right.
A local animal.
Well, it is the Roadrunner.
Okay.
Or the Chupacabra, but, you know. Oh, no, actually, no, the Jackalope. I'd say the Jackalope. Yeah, Jackalope.
Final, final answer?
Yeah, final answer, Jackalope.
All right, and Catherine Rivera.
Hi.
Yeah, so it seems like from your campaign videos that you're just raring to go. Like, how, who's helped you with your videos?
Well, I've had some local support here. I have my family involved in helping me with the videos. And they are actually edited by another family member who is in a distance. So it's a family, it's a family affair.
That's awesome. Please give me an outdated technology.
A landline.
What was one of your favorite places to visit outside of the US?
Stockholm in the summer. The sun does not set there and it's nothing but land and water and it is just grand.
How did you get to go there?
I was working for a Fortune 250 company and I was fortunate to travel the world and the nation. And they had us setting up businesses and taking down businesses and setting up new systems there. And Stockholm was on the list to go. And I was there for about a month.
Awesome.
In the summer.
So you got to see all the sun all the time, right?
Yes, all the time.
Awesome. I think we're ready. I think we're ready. Oh, wait, am I one more? Oh, oh, sorry. You're right. I just can't see. All right. Give me something those damn kids are doing. Are doing today. Those rascally kids.
Rascally kids, driving loud, making a lot of noise and leaving tire marks behind.
All right. Yeah, so now we're gonna, to, to, to read out what you have created together, we're gonna bring on my co-host, Katie. And we are going to announce what the official Midtown Campus Plan is going to be.
All right. On this day, the 18th of September, from the Office of the Mayor, the official proclamation of the city of Santa Fe, whereas all buildings will be painted taupe with the flattest roofs imaginable, a minimum of 27 vigas sourced exclusively from Fort Marcy Park. Whereas Canyon Road Dos Galleries will feature paintings generously borrowed from native traditions. Each piece comes with a download code for the NFT, non-fungible token, not to be confused with the tokenization usually associated with this kind of commodification. Whereas for so long, we've been arguing about one plaza, but Midtown will boast nine public plazas centered around stinky monuments shaped like Christmas chili, perfect for influencer selfies and to inspire endless debates amongst locals. Whereas, and of course, market rate, I mean, affordable housing, one residence will come with complimentary, a really fuzzy pair of slippers and a small shrine to Neil Patrick Harris for authenticity. Whereas bi-weekly, bi-annual festivals celebrating the Jackalope and landlines will invite visitors to interact with kiosks featuring AI young people, enabling you to experience Santa Fe's unique generation next without actually having the youths disturb the exclusive tranquility cultivated in the perimeter with their driving loud and leaving tire marks behind. We're done. So thank you for coming out tonight. I hope you enjoyed this.
All right, so you've done it. You've absolutely made your mark on the city for futures to come. And with that, I am going to bring on our next host, Devon.
Hello, hello. For this next part, anybody running for District Two, please have a seat. This is just District One, folks. All right, there's a script. Thank you, Desba. Okay. Hello, audience. Actually, thank you all, thank you for all the candidates for coming. It's really exciting to see you all. And thank you all for running. Okay, it's time to get to know how much you know about the most important and pressing issues. This moves. Oh, wow. According to us, the most important issues according to us with a little city different history and fun facts. Katie Gross over there will be keeping score. So let's hear it for Katie. And yes, the winner of today's game gets to be assigned to our council of wise elders who will guide our city through these perilous times. Our first game is, wait, wait, for serio? Really? Multiple choice questions. I'll call on each of you to issue a guess, or if you know it. And we'll make sure to rotate who gets to answer in which order. Are you ready, contestants? Okay, exciting. DJ Billiam, are you ready? Okay, let's get started.
Yes.
Which of the following bars is open past 10:00 PM on a weeknight? Okay, The Cowgirl, Evangelos, The Dragon Room, or Swig? Okay. Let's start with our farthest candidate. Which is your answer?
Is this one? Will you pick one?
You gotta pick one, just one.
I will pick Evangelos.
Evangelos?
Evangelos.
Evangelos?
Evangelos.
Hot dog. It's Evangelos. Wow. The competition is stiff. Oh my gosh. Founded by a man named Evangelo in 1970, who settled in Santa Fe after World War II, fun fact. And we don't talk about the matador because nobody remembers what they did there. Next question. The city of Santa Fe's general fund revenue primarily comes from property taxes, lodgers' taxes, gross receipts taxes, or soda tax? Same order, because it's easier for me.
Gross receipts tax.
Gross receipts?
Gross receipts.
Gross receipts.
Gross receipts tax. Wow, my God. Neck and neck and neck. I don't know. Does anybody remember when the soda tax was proposed? Yes, yes. Here's the fun fact. 20,000 people came out to vote just against the soda tax, beating, beating ever, every turnout since 2014 for a mayoral election. And so just like a little advice, maybe just like put soda issues on anything that you want to have a big turnout for. Okay, it's tied. Which Santa Fe neighborhood is remembered as one of the first places where chili was grown, cooked, and eaten daily? The Hillside Neighborhood, Casa Solana, Barrio de Analko, or Las Campanas?
Why am I going first on all these? I got two right already. Like, I feel like we should let someone else go first.
All right, okay. We'll go opposite order this time.
Thanks. I'm gonna go with C.
Okay, Barrio de Analko. Same?
I'll go with Sam too.
Barrio de Analko. It's a tie. It is a vibe. Tlaxcala natives settled that part of Santa Fe way back in the day. Analko, someone has told me, is Nahuatl, meaning the other side of the river. So what do you know? And they brought their own food traditions, including chili. So this is like shocking and stunning. Everybody's tied up here. I thought for sure we'd have a runaway, but three for three for three. So I guess this is a tiebreaker? Guess question.
Hi, candidates. My name is Alma Castro, City and City Councilor, District One. And I have a question for you. At the center of the plaza, underneath the obelisk, we are certain that there is, which of the following? Tunnels that connect all of the city buildings? Colonel Marcy's bones? A time capsule from the masons? Or D, all of the above?
All right, let's start with the middle and go to your left.
Say C.
C, time capsule from the masons, okay?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some wishful thinking and say D.
D?
I'm gonna go with C.
C. Time capsule.
Partly right, partly right.
We only know for certain that the Masonic time capsule is there. I hope you got it right.
Although, although no one's actually been able to really verify that that's there. It's just, it was written down that it was put there, but no one's actually seen it.
They tried. They tried a couple of years ago.
Right, but they couldn't find it.
But they also don't know that there's not tunnels or bones.
That's true. They don't know that there's not all the bones. It could be all of the above.
But there, there are rumored tunnels underneath La Fonda going to other parts, not city buildings, but there's rumors of tunnels underneath La Fonda.
But I hear we could fly those guys back in.
I really, well, someday I hope to make a video where I do find those tunnels and I'm like in the tunnels. Anyway, okay. Santa Fe Relief Route, aka 599, Veterans Memorial Highway, was built for what reason? To relieve congestion on Cerro San Francisco, safe for vehicles transporting radioactive waste from Los Alamos to Whip. Shortcut for Rio and Francis. The Santa Fe Opera, or part of a nationwide experiment in how people deal with frustratingly slow speed limits on what appears to be a normal interstate with two lanes and everything, while being policed meter quota for catching speeders at the end of all of it.
I'm gonna say B, the radioactive waste.
B? B? It's B. That's right. You know, when I, and you probably also remember, when it was first built, it felt very far out of town. And now it doesn't feel so far out of town. It doesn't feel so depopulated for all the trucks carrying tons of radioactive waste, but... Growing pains? I don't know. Okay.
More? Is there more? That's it.
That's it. All right. Thank you, guys, for the quiz show. You guys nailed it. Thank you to our contestants. All right. And now Desba is returning to take over for the council, the next set of councillors to answer their questions. Oh, it's a dating show. Next is the dating show. Thank you, guys.
Well, hello again. You all survived wonderfully and beautifully. Our next game is the Dating Game, where are you like council material or like what? Okay. But in lieu of having a singular date, you're trying to woo the audience and seduce them with your hot, steamy performance dances. You will have one minute, one minute, one 60 seconds, to share your ideas and to answer, or else DJ Billiam will start drowning you out. So audience, when you, when we're coming to the end, I'll ask you who you think has the best answer. And then you guys all say yay! Okay, so that's how it's gonna be. All right? Okay. So are you ready? Are you ready? Are you ready? DJ Billiam, are you ready? Okay, anybody else? No? Come on, get with the program. Okay. So are you council material? All right. So the first question that we have, we're gonna start with you, Pat. Everyone agrees that we need more affordable housing, but the NIMBYism is strong here. Would you support it being built in your district?
Am I supposed to take 60 seconds to say yes?
Well, I mean, we're kind of hoping for a little bit of like...
Yes. All right. So yes, I would support affordable housing being built in District One, which is my district, our district, everyone up here on the stage right now. You know, we need, we need housing all over the city. District One, clearly the best district. I think more people should be able to live in it. And I think we can do that by allowing more housing to be built there and for part of that housing to be designated as affordable. I would like for a lot of it to actually be affordable as well as designated affordable. And, you know, I, I live in the rail yard. I have lots of neighbors. I like having neighbors. I think more people should get to live near me.
Okay, and David? Let's, let's hold clapping until we're, we're done.
I feel like we're at a council meeting. Got your jazz hands.
Hold on. Okay, yes, please continue. Everyone agrees that we need more housing. Would you like it in your district?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I mean...
You know, I mean, uh, I mean, citywide too. I mean, everybody should have, not just affordable housing, but, but really workforce housing. I mean, when you have city employees, when you have cops, when you have firemen, when you have teachers, when you have nurses, they can't afford to live in the city that they work in. You know, we need to, we need to really work on that problem. And if it's city-owned land, it should be 100% either affordable or workforce housing, you know? And, and by doing that, you know, we've also got to take a look at short-term rentals, you know, and, and make sure that we enforce the regulations. There's a thousand, you know, short-term rentals that are operating illegally right now. We need to enforce that law and return those in the rental market. That talk about lowering your rent, you know, adding a thousand to the inventory will, will do a lot to not only lower rent, but create more affordable housing. So that's it.
And Catherine?
Absolutely. We need affordable housing, and certainly in District 1. I'm a big proponent of infill, and I think by advocating infill, which means allowing to be, have additional buildings in addition, in separate lots or lot splits to allow for different buildings, will allow our local developers to play and build affordable housing in our district. I agree that we have a lot of short-term rentals that need to be reviewed, many as mentioned here are, are illegal, but we also have a lot of vacant homes. We have a lot of second and third homes that are just sitting empty, and I'm advocating that we do something to put some sort of a community fee on them and add that to the Affordable Trust Fund so that we can build the infill that we need in District 1.
All right. Kind of changed the order of things. All right. So who do, who thinks that David gave a good answer? Who likes what Pat had to say? And Catherine? All right, moving on. With insurance companies pulling insurance from homeowners and the increasing risk from climate-related disasters, how will you help ensure that Santa Fe is best protecting its residents? And we're gonna start with you, Catherine.
Thank you for the question. I've had conversations with the fire team about our risk in Santa Fe, and unfortunately, we've got a lot of folks living in the hills, like the High Park area and Saragordo, who have lost their insurance and are continuing to worry about how they're going to, to handle that. Many of the homeowners have taken the matters amongst themselves and formed with the HOAs to get insurance there, but we have been pushing for the fire departments in general and the emergency management to set forth the plan for how it can articulate to everyone, including the new home buyers and existing residents, on whether or not we are safe for a future emergency. But we do need to work at getting information to the insured community so that they are more comfortable with insuring Santa Fe residents going forward.
And Pat, we're gonna go to you.
One of the, one of the ways that we can help protect Santa Fe from climate change is to stop sprawling out into the foothills and into the other areas around the town. If we build more infill housing in town, we can keep a perimeter around the city, which we would be better able to protect from wildfires and fires outside of our area. So having infill housing, having more development inside the city instead of people building further and further out makes, makes us safer and makes it easier to protect the folks who live in the city.
And David?
Well, as, as someone who actually is trained to be a wildland firefighter, there are, there's a lot that we can do right now. You know, not just when we build new homes, but whenever you have that urban wildlife interface, there are things that you need to do in your current home. Cover your gutters, you know, what you do when you space trees out and those kind of things. But I think the real insurance solution is gonna have to be with the Superintendative Insurance, you know, over at the, at the PRC. And we've got to force not only these changes in future construction and the way that we build things, along with infill and building more in town, but we've also got to do some of these make sense measures in order to make our residents and our houses and our buildings that are at that urban and wildland interface a little bit more safer to live in.
All right, so who thinks that Catherine won this round? And David? And Pat? Okay. The audience has spoken. All right, say you are shopping, and an unmarked ICE van comes and starts trying to arrest people. What would you do? David?
First, I'd, I'd start filming, right? And, and then I'd run up to the ICE folks and, and at the same time, I'd, I'd ask someone to call some tow trucks, because ICE likes to park illegally and, and tow their trucks away so that they can't really load anybody into the trucks. And, and then start speaking Spanish. That would confuse them.
And Pat?
Unfortunately, it's a problem that is here and is probably coming in greater, greater numbers. I think filming is a, is a good thing to do. I think also there are some networks where you can let folks know where ICE agents are so that people can avoid the area. So I would tell, tell some of those networks. And yeah, I think, you know, we need, we need to come up with a solution. Our, our city police are already not, you know, relaying information that is not required to immigration, and we need to strengthen that as much as we can.
And Catherine?
I agree that filming was probably the first step. The second thing that I would do if I was present there, I would be asking the ICE agents if they have the appropriate required warrants and what their rationale is for being there. So I think approaching them, making sure that they are doing things in a legitimate fashion along with the filming, that would be what I would do if I was present and saw that happening.
I want to say I appreciate all of your dedication to protecting the citizens of Santa Fe. All right. So who won this round? Pat? All of them? David? Catherine? All right. All right. This is the most important question, most important answer. I did not come up with these questions, just FYI. That was a group effort. All right. Yeah, who are you endorsing? So... You can answer however you choose.
Oh yeah, it could be a right choice.
Yeah, so yeah, Pat, start with you.
I honestly haven't decided yet.
All right, good answer. All right.
Three or four top choices. I will rank them.
And David?
There's a mayor's race?
Good answer. All right. Catherine?
One of the eight candidates.
Thank you to the audience for upholding our, our, you know, performance. Okay. We might need your help out here, out here in the audience.
We'll start filming.
Thank you. All right, so now we are back, and we are going to choose another host to, in the fire squad. Oh, 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 sorry, I was jumping ahead. The big reveal, the big reveal. All right, and we're gonna have Katie come up with the answer. All right. Final tallies. Pat has five. David has five. Catherine has seven.
It's, it's the only time I'll cheer for you for winning.
We're gonna have an exchange of seats, exchange of seats. Let's have District 2 come up. District 1, thank you so much. Another round for District 1. Handing of the microphones, it is a very regal way. All right, we're here, our next host is Warren.
I gotta get this illegal question off the screen. Jesus.
Of all the things you'd ever thought you'd be going to jail for.
Jesus Christ. Okay. We all know how this game is played. It's a multiple choice one that Devin just did, but I'm doing it now.
But different.
But different. How y'all doing?
Good, thank you.
Did you enjoy that first part?
Yes.
Was it fun?
See.
See. Okay. Well, let's just dive right in. All right. So which of the following neighborhoods is not zoned for commercial use? Is it Cordova Road? Like, the pronunciation on that, I think, is up for debate. Cordova? Cordova? Cordova. Okay. Guadalupe District? South Capitol? Or D, De Vargas Heights?
Go ahead, Paul, you start off.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
You're first.
South Capitol, C.
I'm gonna say D. I'm gonna go D.
It is D indeed. Now quickly, extra points. Who can tell me where De Vargas Heights is?
Let's tell them, guys. Over there. I don't think I've ever...
I think I should get like a bonus point.
It's all over theirs, man.
Somewhere in District 2, that's where it is.
That is absolutely correct. You guys remember Peppers, the restaurant? It's back behind there. It's not called Peppers anymore, it's been called...
Pecco's Trail Cafe.
Pecco's what now? Pecco's Trail Cafe. Yeah, I should have led with that. All right. Moving on. Am I going to jail? Boston, totally. Jeez. Is it De Vargas Mall spelled that way? Like, one word? Okay, they, we've, we've got to capitalize the V. Okay. Sorry. I've, I've brought so much shame on our news organization. I'll be better in our next slideshow. Okay, which of the following was a recent violation of the city's historic preservation regulations? A, a greenhouse where someone was visibly growing marijuana? A half-built wall on Camino del Monte Sol that remained unstuckoed for at least five years? A yard full of homemade teepees housing neighborhood stray cats? A house painted Sunrise Poppy? D. Wait a sec. Okay, we're starting with you, Paul.
D.
D. D.
D indeed. So, story is, Michael and Diane O'Donnell moved to Santa Fe from Silicon Valley. They painted their house Sunrise Poppy, which they claimed could be considered an earth tone. I agree with that. And Diane said, "I can't live in a brown house." Well, Diane... I don't know if I can say this. If you're not down with the brown, get out of town. Now, audience, candidates, who likes this color? I do. It's definitely found in nature. It's over on La Bahia Hill.
Pop of color.
Yes, watermelon-ish. So everyone hates it? Everyone hates, okay. All right. Oh, now it's time for a guest question. Okay, everyone shushy. Look at the screen.
Hello, 5050matic team, Santa Fe City Council candidates and Santa Fe friends. Councillor Michael Garcia here, and I've got a question for you. As a Santa Fe City councillor, you're gonna spend a lot of time in City Hall. City Hall wasn't always a city building. What was the previous use of the building? A, a military facility? B, a posh Victorian hotel? C, a high school? Or D, a saloon and gambling establishment?
Let's start with you, Aurora.
C.
Uh, Liz?
A high school.
Okay, I'll go with C also.
I mean, I wanna say D, but it's probably C. C.
Yes, I don't think that he actually graduated from that high school, but there he is. Uh, thank you, Councillor Garcia, for that educative fact. This is a fun one. Who, who is one of the main contributors of litter in Santa Fe? A, City of Santa Fe garbage collectors? B, the houseless population? C, teenagers? Or D, tourists? We'll start with you, Liz.
I'm gonna go D, tourists.
Aurora?
B.
I'm gonna say D.
All of you are wrong.
Oh, stop it. No.
So, yeah. This is due to the fact that many garbage cans have broken or missing lids. You've probably had to call that number or write that email to replace your lid before. I will say they're very prompt about it. And, um, yeah, I really like those guys going around replacing all those lids. Uh, this is just a personal pet peeve of mine. I don't think we needed to replace what is already a wonderful and working slogan for combating litter. Toss no moss. I miss you, and I want you back. I know we spent a lot of money hiring some A-list actors to come here and reprise their roles. Look at how well it fits in a trash can. It's beautiful. Let's bring back toss no moss. I wanna start like a toss no moss. Toss no moss. Toss no moss, thank you. Last question. Who funded the Dale Ball Trails? Is it A, George R.R. Martin? Is he here? He's probably in that little secret room back there. Dale Ball himself? Tom Udo? Or D, an anonymous donor? Paul?
I should know this, because it's near my house. I'm gonna say D.
Aurora?
I'm gonna say C.
I'm also gonna go with Tom Udo.
All right, it is, whoops, an anonymous donor. The interesting fact about this is that the donor had one condition. Dale had like plenty of opportunity to have things named after him. He declined all of it, and the anonymous donor said, "I'm only gonna donate all this money if you actually like let it be named after you." And so, yeah, he was a conservationist who, in the 1990s, developed this whole thing to protect Adelaiamaton. So, yeah. Let's hear it for Dale. Thank you, councillors. I'm gonna hand it back to Desba, where you get to do the fun dating game thing.
Was that for me? Well, you all know how this goes, right? We're gonna ask a question, they're gonna have time to answer, and then you're gonna, at the end, so hold your applause, please, at the end, we get to decide who is what, right? Okay, yeah, okay, we're good to go? Good, awesome. Okay, so are you councillor material? Starting with the first question.
Yes.
Perfect timing. Every year, we seem to have a few pedestrian and cyclist deaths. May they rest in peace. What are your ideas for making it safer for people to ride and walk in this friggin' town?
Okay.
So, yes, you're staring at me, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Protected bike lanes would be amazing. We've been talking about that for a long time. Traffic calming, roundabouts, slower speed limits, less car lanes, more... Traffic calming, roundabouts, slower speed limits, less car lanes, more biking lanes, expanded biking lanes, more walkable areas in town. And those are some of my ideas.
Aurora?
I can say I honestly don't know a whole lot about this issue. I am not a cyclist, so... But I am willing to do whatever it takes to learn about it. One thing traffic monitoring they do do at the state level, which I used to work at, is kind of where they count how many bikes, how many cars, and making it safer for the two to combine together and be on the road together, which I think is a good plan to start off with, to find out how many bikes and how many cars and what kind of cars are on certain roads.
Because you used to work for New Mexico DOT, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Awesome. And Paul?
Did I say doo-doo?
Yeah, okay, so, you know, there's the new vision, is it Vision Zero? Zero Vision, which hopefully will address some of these. But yes, protected bike lanes. I know for a fact that on Yucca Street, for example, where pedestrians cross, when they didn't have anything there, people would just try to zip around the cars that were stopped for pedestrians until they put that median there that forces people to stop. So we can look at more things like that. Speed cameras, and I know this would never pass, but red light cameras, because, good God, everybody runs red lights around here. And if we could do something to stem some of that, that would truly, I think, help some of that, you know, bring down some of the deaths.
All right. So we're going to do a cheering thing? The cheering thing, okay? Get ready. So we're going to, for Liz? For Aurora? And Paul? I guess there was that red light comment.
I'll be in the paper again.
It's for the safety of all of us. All right. What do you think the living wage should be in Santa Fe? And we're going to start with you, Paul.
So I definitely support the new measures to increase the living wage. My problem with it is even at $17.50, and they're talking about having a COLA increase, every year it's going to go up a little bit. But it's a temporary stopgap measure because I think at most what it's going to do right now is give people some breathing room. It's going to give families a little bit of breathing room so they don't have to worry about if their car breaks down, what are we going to do? What we really need to start doing is addressing the issues that are surrounding it, like affordable housing, you know, until people can have somewhere that they can live and not have to worry about paying $2,500 a month for a two-bedroom apartment, which is more than my mortgage, by the way. You know, temporary increases like this aren't going to do anything to really help people out. So, yeah, hopefully the city looks at it as like a time clock and gets going. Thank you.
And Liz?
Well, I think it's a good start to bring up the $17.50 minimum wage. I don't think it goes far enough. I don't think many people in here could live off $17.50 an hour, let alone buy a home. I think $20 would probably be just a good place to start, not to be, but just to start. I was just reading an article the other day that said 80% of Santa Feans could not afford the median income house in Santa Fe, which I think is like $600,000. So again, I think it's a good conversation to have. I think raising the minimum wage lifts people out of poverty, lifts working families out of poverty. I don't think it goes far enough, but I think it's a good start.
And Aurora?
So I am in support of this. However, it is a short-term fix. That's all it is. When I first came back to Santa Fe, I worked at $16.50 an hour. It didn't do much. So $17.50 an hour is not going to help. Housing needs to be lower. Every inch needs to be lower. And small businesses are going to be taking the brunt of this. So we need to also think about, if we're going to raise this, we also need to help with the GRT for the small businesses, so maybe it won't hurt the small businesses as much. That's what I'm thinking.
So Paul? And Liz? All right, moving on. Many people are unable to show up at city council meetings to have their voices heard. What are other ways, what other ways do you plan to listen to and engage with your constituents? And we're going to start with you, Aurora.
So I have a really great idea that I want to be able to be there for my constituents is a newsletter. It's going to be online for those who are IT savvy. Then the other one is going to be the old-fashioned way of getting it into the mailbox. I want to hear from every single constituent. I want to know what they say. I'm not going to say that they're always going to be on the same page, but I want to make sure that I'm doing the majority of what my constituents want. So surveys, constant putting out on my newsletter, I want to make sure that everything is plain-spoken, any resolution, any ordinance that's coming out, it'll be plain-spoken. They can call me, they can ask questions, and they can say, "Yes, I want this, no, I don't." So that is kind of what I was planning on doing.
Liz?
Yeah. I agree with, you know, online, you could reach out online. But I also, I just came from the event that just happened at Tumble Root, and it was a community meeting. Yeah, give it up for that event. That event was awesome. And there were kids there, and there were families there, and it was very diverse. So community meetups, I think, would be amazing. Bring the kids, everybody's invited. You know, what are the issues going on in District Two? Let's meet somewhere, let's meet at Regal Park. Let's meet at somewhere in District Two, right? And bring the whole family, bring your opinion, and I think it's a great way to interact with your constituents.
And Paul?
So I'm going to make sure that I'm interacting with the neighborhood associations because often they're, you know, at the forefront of a lot of the issues that come up and are brought up at City Hall. Also, this is going to be my full-time job. And so, you know, I've noticed at City Hall, I've never seen it open, so I don't know what it looks like inside, but I've noticed that there's a city councillor's office. And I plan to have weekly office hours that people can come and talk to me and bring up their issues in person. So I plan on being there, literally, for them to let me know what's on their minds.
They have a nice hydration station in there.
I wouldn't know.
All right, moving on. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Wait, wait. And Paul? And Liz? Okay, so next. What's next? What's this next question?
Yes.
Who is getting your endorsement for the mayor? All right, let's start with you, Paul.
They know already.
Okay. Aurora?
I'm undecided. Undecided.
Liz?
I just want to say that I went to an Ask Me picnic, and I met every single mayoral candidate, and there's just a lot of amazing, exciting, innovative candidates that I got to chat with, and I haven't made my mind up, but I'm impressed with all of them.
All right. Okay, so who are we going to? Whose answer do you like the best? Aurora? Paul? All right. And we are going to now reveal the winner of this round for District Two candidates. Oops. Katie, please. All right. We've got Liz with six, Aurora with five, Paul with four.
It was the red light one.
Good job, you guys. Good job, District Two candidates.
All right. We want to thank you all for attending. We want to make sure that you guys are going to go out to the patio outside and take some drinks and mingle with your candidates, ask them some more questions, and tell them what you really liked, grill them as best as you know you can do. Yeah, just take this opportunity to go vibe and chat and see, you know, Pat, we've got Catherine, we've got David, we've got Liz, we've got Aurora, we've got Paul. Do you want to come up and stand up here with us? And we're going to give you all the round of applause. Together, we can make this Santa Fe the way we want it. Okay. Go mingle. Don't forget about 505. Warren, do you have any other words? No? Yeah. Okay, bye.
Thank you so much. We do have t-shirts outside on the patio for those interested, and they are very limited run. We will be changing the logo soon. Also, this will be podcasted. You can find more information at 505-O-Matic.com. Thanks for coming, Lee. Appreciate it.